Let's go ahead, Emilio. And, okay. So let's start the October 30th Planning Commission meeting. First item on the agenda is Agenda Changes. Anyone have any of those? Nothing? Uh, second item is Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items. I don't think there's gonna be any of those, seeing as there's no public. Um, so number three, we're going to jump right back into the Growth Management Scoring System for Water/Wastewater Allocation. And we had done so much last time that we were on the...
You were on the last criteria.
The last one. Um, Energy Efficiency and Renewable Technology.
I will put that up on screen. There are extra paper copies over here on the table if anybody needs one. It's in the Dropbox. And let's get to that section. This is at the...starts at the bottom of page five of the scoring system document. So by way of introduction, this is the sixth of the six scoring criteria, and it has a maximum point value of 15. Uh, and it's...the idea is to incentivize and award points to projects that are building to a higher energy efficiency standard than what the state requires. And just so everybody's on the same page, Vermont does not have statewide building codes, except for energy efficiency. It's the one place where the state does stipulate, you know, how many...how much insulation you put in your walls or roof or around your foundation, um, and that sort of thing. So there is a minimum energy efficiency standard for both residential and commercial building, and this section recognizes that by saying, um, on page six, that you get zero points if you simply meet the state minimums, and then you get more points if you're gonna go above and beyond. The committee talked about a variety of ways to maybe, uh, dole out points, and they took the recommendation of the Energy Committee, who was a part of this process, um, in awarding points for residential buildings based on an established, uh, system that Efficiency Vermont manages. So Efficiency Vermont has higher tiers that you can achieve, and there are, um, bigger tax credits for homes that meet those higher tiers. And so it's very simple. If you, um, if you meet the certified base level of energy efficiency, um, you get five points. That's above the statewide minimum. If you meet their, uh, high-performance level of energy efficiency, you get 10 points. So those are their two higher tiers. And then it goes on to...there's a similar tier system for non-residential development, um, and so it flows from that as well. And then we had a discussion about, um, electrical vehicle charging and how that is gonna need to happen, um, in developments if we're all gonna be driving electric cars in 10 years or 15 years. Uh, so some bonus points were developed for, uh, projects that provide infrastructure to facilitate that. And then there was this desire to also have points for projects that employ renewable energy technologies. So not just efficient buildings that don't use much energy, but projects that go beyond that to say, "Okay, we're also gonna supply our own energy." And unfortunately, uh, the Energy Committee, uh, chewed on this and recommended this clear...that's an acronym, uh, rating system. Uh, Chuck Reese is pretty, uh, engaged in this and has a colleague in his Green Building Collaborative that has developed a proprietary system to rank a project based on how much it uses in terms of renewables. And we were never able to quite get the details of that. Um, so I spoke with Chuck last week and said, "Hey, we're gonna be talking about this next week, you know, can you get us that?" And I sicked Ralph on him, and, uh, as you can see, neither of them are here tonight. Um, and I didn't get that yet. So we're still, um, we're still sort of in limbo as to whether we have a...an easy renewable energy scoring system that we can plug in here. My recommendation would be, once you finish this discussion tonight, and I clean all this stuff up based on how you wanted it changed, um, if we can get something in for that next discussion of the cleaned-up version, you can talk about it. And if not, we just ax it and have it drop out of here. Um, and maybe it can be reinserted at a Select Board level of review if, uh, if we get something solid from the Energy Committee and Chuck. But eventually, we gotta move forward with this.
Something I would like to see as part of this, something you mentioned a long time ago about requiring new homes to be solar-ready. So I looked into that. I talked with Paul LaShore, and for a new home, from basement to rooftop, is only about a $200 cost to get it ready for solar.
To make it easier for rooftop solar to happen?
Yes.
In terms of the conduits that are run and...
Yeah. So that sounds...
Was Paul, um, basing that just on running electricity and conduits and the like, or was he also talking about roof construction such that the roof could hold...
Just the conduits.
Just the conduits?
But he did, oh, I didn't bring the paper. He gave me roof proportions that if they were a minimum size for solar, it would be beneficial, and to encourage developers to face their houses south so that the flat roof is facing south. And with some of these developments, that surely could happen.
Yes, and we have in our zoning regs, uh, requirements that they be oriented for maximum solar gain and the like, recognizing that that's not possible for every house in a development depending on the nature of the project and how streets are laid out and lots are designed. But it is one of our review criteria. So your suggestion would be if we don't have a whiz-bang, um, comprehensive look at renewable energy, we could at least incent...allow points for, um, projects that build solar-ready homes, that invest in that. Okay, that's an idea.
Which might want to include the capacity of the roof structure to carry...
Right.
Solar panels. My own experience is that's not a big weight add for normal construction.
For construction, yeah.
Usually, you can put panels there and be fine.
It sure doesn't seem like it, just from my own layperson's experience of how many homes in Heinsburg have been outfitted with panels well after the back, long after they were built.
They weren't thinking about that when they built the house.
Yeah. It doesn't seem like the panels add enough in terms of weight to require a whole different kind of roof construction to hold them up.
The area that it might affect would be a flat-roofed building. That because the snow will remain on the building, there's no benefit. If you have a sloped roof, you get a benefit for the snow clearing itself off. You don't get that with a flat-roofed building. So particularly the industrial, commercial buildings, which tend to be bigger, flatter roofs. Maybe there, we wanna say that the roof structure is adequate to carry solar panels. Like outfitting a residence to be able to, from the basement to the top floor. And in my house, we just put empty conduits, in order to add more panels over what I already have.
Gotcha.
So a couple of quick comments. Um, the first one, in this section, how do we treat mixed-use buildings? Right? You say residential, non-residential. What about mixed-use?
That's a good point.
Number two, um, I would think that in anything we do in this town, probably the residential square footage is gonna outweigh the non-residential square footage. So I would actually put that one first in terms of high-performance level. All right? Get the most square foot you can at the high-performance rating before you give any points.
Wait, I'm confused, Joe. What did you mean by that?
So five points here, right? The residential has to be base, and the non-residential has to be high-performance. And then you get 10 points if the residential is high-performance and the non-residential is high-performance. Right? I would turn it around and say you get five points if, you know, the residential is high-performance and the non-residential is maybe something less than high-performance, 'cause I think you're gonna get more square footage for residential. Right? And then give the extra points for non-residential. The third thing I would do, if you can, is prioritize insulation in this section, because that's the one thing that can't really easily be gone back to and retrofitted and improved without high cost. You can change, you know, you can add solar, you can change light bulbs, you can do things like that. But insulation, it's baked.
I think, wouldn't that be, you know, if you're going for high-performance, that typically will address that issue?
It kinda, yeah.
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 It will mandate, say for example, certain thermal...
Yeah.
R-values for walls, roof, foundation, that sort of thing.
Why is the requirement for non-residential buildings the same in the five-point version and the 10-point version? Is there no other step like there is in residential? It's the same sentence. I've read it five times to make sure I'm reading the same sentence.
Yes, no, it's a good catch, John, and I'm gonna quickly look at our work on that to see what the Energy Committee recommended, 'cause I'm wondering if that's a typo. 'Cause, yeah, there's no...there's no reason that's...
There's no base?
There's no reason somebody would...you don't...yeah, you would get the 10 points automatically. There's no two-tiered approach there.
Well, um, it's the residential part of it that boots you off.
Five points, and that's...
Right.
But if you don't have any non-residential in your project, then...
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good point.
Let me look and see if I have some backup on that.
I don't know the regulations well enough to...or the recommendations well enough to...
So I'll be quiet now so we can get out of here.
Okay, so we can have the five and the 10-point. The...it's residential, but it says Vermont Certified Base Level versus Vermont Certified High Performance Level?
Right, that one's clear.
Yeah.
Residential side is clear. It's the non-residential, it's the same sentence.
Oh, okay, I see what you mean. The whole non-residential.
After the comma, "and," it's the same.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So what was the...sorry, maybe I'm slow here. What was the reason that in the five-point system, was it simply, Alex, what you said, which was, since most of these structures are gonna be residential, that higher percentage of structures is gonna be residential? Why not, for the five-point thing, have both meet that certified base level of energy efficiency? 10 points goes to both residential and non-residential for a certified high-performance level of energy efficiency? What was the reason for that?
I don't understand why.
That's the basic question. I'm looking to see...I have some vague recollection that the...that on the residential side, there was a clear two-tiered system that Efficiency Vermont promulgated. And on the commercial side...
There wasn't.
I don't...I think there wasn't.
Well, they have the high performance for commercial and the net zero.
You've got...
And then they call it the Equipment Efficiency High Performance and then Net Zero. So go under Contractors if you're, um, Efficiency Vermont.
I mean, if we do that, I mean, then you just say, projects where all buildings will meet for five points, will meet Efficiency Vermont Certified Base Level, and 10 points would be projects where all buildings meet the high-performance standard.
Yeah, I have this memory of Laura on the Energy Committee recommending...
Is there a big difference between the minimum standards and the certified base?
There is a difference, yes. The certified base is higher than the minimum standards. Maggie, I am under the Contractors section. Where are you in there that...
So contractors on efficiencyvermont.com/programs/newconstruction. So try under Programs.
Okay, I'm under Programs, New Construction.
Was it your recollection somewhat around having a project where both residential and commercial meet high standards was just like a really hard thing to do that potentially...there's really not too many projects that do that?
No, my...this very vague memory I have, which I apologize. I thought I had documentation from the Energy Committee wrapped up in all these files that I've kept, um, on this, but my recollection was, uh, that the Energy Committee, Laura in particular, who's...who is familiar and maybe works for VEIC, said something about the commercial, um, higher-performance standards. Now I remember what it was. I thought that she said there were two tiers, and the first tier wasn't much of an improvement over the state minimum, so we shouldn't incentivize...we shouldn't give points for that. It should be the higher-performance tier only that gets incentive points. But why I...why it was written so that there's no difference with the five and the 10-point level, that doesn't make sense. That's...I think that's an oops.
Yeah, I can't quite remember.
So let me...let me go back to my source material and maybe chat with Laura and clarify that.
Okay.
And did you find...have you found it?
The website?
Yeah.
Yes, I have. But let me get back to you at our next topic, next time we touch on this, and I'll confirm with Laura what it should really read.
Yeah, look at that and kinda combine into what we think is gonna happen with residential
So Ralph, I was explaining before you got here that I hadn't heard yet from Chuck about the clear rating system. Did you hear back from him on that, or...
Uh, I got a phone call from him today at 4:30, but I wasn't able to answer it.
Okay, so what I said...
I'll continue.
Yeah, what I said was...
I mean, we've had a few messages pass back and forth.
Yeah. What I told the rest of the board before you and Dan got here was, um, my recommendation is, uh, it looks like I'm gonna be making a bunch of changes to this based on your last couple meetings of conversation, which means you're gonna see it again at a, maybe your next meeting. And hopefully, we can have Chuck's system to look at by then, and if we don't, maybe we just eliminate that and say, you know, Select Board, if you wanna add this back in at a later date, since this is gonna be, um, you know, in front of them later on, they can do that, but just to get us to a public hearing.
Yeah.
We don't wanna have an empty spot in the proposal. It'd be better just to get rid of it. But Barb's suggestion was that if we don't get this more comprehensive, clear-rating way of looking at renewable technology, that we should at least include some incentive points for projects that commit to solar-ready, rooftop solar-ready structures.
Yeah.
And Barb's conversation with Paul at Green Mountain Solar is that that's a pretty inexpensive route in terms of having the appropriate conduit to make that happen at a later date if it's not part of the first original construction.
No, that's a good, uh, good thing to add, I think.
I also...I wonder...I'm sorry, did I...
No, it's okay.
Um, I wonder about the electrical vehicle charging.
Yeah, what do you think of how that's worded?
So for residential use, uh, access to an outlet suitable for at least low-to-charging, two points if enough infrastructure is provided such that 50% of the residential units can simultaneous charge...simultaneously charge. I mean, that's...I mean, compared to what most...
What we have now.
Yeah, what we have now.
Yeah.
That's a huge, huge jump, and only two bonus points.
You wanna give more points for that?
More points for that, and my gosh, 100%?
You're absolutely right. That's huge. Nobody is building like that right now.
Right, right. And so, um, you know, I don't know anything about the clear ratings, so I'm sort of tempted to drop that anyway and really, really incentivize the electrical vehicle charging.
Given that a lot of Vermont's, you know, carbon load is transportation, yeah.
The other thing is that you can charge an electric car, at least everything that I've read, off of 120-volt outlet. It takes much longer, and the 240-volt is the preferred option. But we can provide charging, um, stations in a house, in a garage, at 120-volt, and maybe that happens anyway. Maybe everybody has outlets in their garage.
I mean, I know multiple people with electric cars, and they start off with 120, and they quickly call the electrician.
Right, they go to 240. Yeah, it's definitely the better way to do it. No question.
I was just visiting my son in Portland, Oregon, and the neighborhood he lives in, a lot of people had it, and it was coming out of the front of their garage, and then the cord was across the sidewalk, which I didn't like. And then the car was right there being charged all the time. So to be careful when you walked, to pay atten...I mean, it was all good, but that part I didn't like.
So the car was parked on the street?
Yes, because this neighborhood that he lives in, houses are...
It happens to be...
Yeah, like, yeah. And, um, their houses are very close to the street. So, um, if it wasn't in the garage, which most people had stuff in their garages, it seems like, so their cars were...
They park their cars.
Right, exactly.
They don't have enough driveway space for the car.
Right, exactly. So, yeah, but I thought it was really cool that they had a...there were so many that I saw. And the units seemed to be coming out of the front of the garage. That's cool. Just didn't like the cord.
I agree with Maggie in terms of more points for particularly, if there was enough units so that 50% of the units can be simultaneously charging. That's a big expense, but if you get more points for it, you wanna do it.
Would you give like five points, or...and then 10 for both, for...if 100%? I don't know. What would you do?
We're saying...we're saying the total maximum points is 15 for this category.
Yeah, but, but, I mean...
If you don't like two, where do you go? But to...
Well, these are bonus points, too, so it could be above the 15.
No, I can't...no.
No, they can't be above 15.
Why wouldn't they be?
I mean, every unit must have their own power.
Well, think about a...think about a multifamily building. So, uh, a 10...10plex building with underbuilding parking.
Yeah.
You've gotta...you've gotta run conduit and, you know, connections for...to drop a charge, the ability to charge at every parking station.
Also, with the whole meter, you mean?
That part's really hard to figure out. You know, how do you...how do you...
I mean, if it was townhouses, each one would have their own meter.
Right, shouldn't be a problem for single-family homes or for townhouse styles that, you know, each have their own meters. It becomes more difficult when you have apartments. Yep.
And then if you have apartments with open-on-grade parking, not under the...you know, not in the structure...
Yes, then it becomes even more difficult.
Then it's harder.
Yeah, yeah.
No, actually, I think that becomes easier. You put it out there, and it's pay-for-use, so...
Yeah, you wonder how they pay for it.
Well, so that was the conversation we had when I lived in Condo Land in South Burlington. My building was 89 units. They're all owned units, not rented, and we had underbuilding parking for most of the units, I think all but maybe six or seven. And I posed the question, um, how are we gonna...you know, can we look into doing that, and how would we do it? And because the building wasn't constructed to...with that in mind, um, it was gonna be a difficult, uh, a difficult answer of how you deal with that and how you...how you make sure that, you know, everyone's...everyone's paying equally, or people who don't have electric cars aren't being dinged. It's a tough one. It's much easier to, I think, figure out at the front end of a project. So that's why these incentive points, you're right, probably should be much higher so that somebody could really see the value of figuring that out.
You have to figure out what it costs, you'd have to put money in.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the charges that you see in public spaces typically have, you know, an app attach...you know, you have an app interface, and you have to interface with that, and it charges you on an hourly basis. But at a residential...for residential use, you know, obviously, if you own it, that's not the case. It's just part of your...
But the multifamily, whether it's under a structure or out in the open, could all be you pay when you're charging your car right then. Doesn't matter whether it's in the building or, you know, out in the open.
Yep.
Still use...
It'd be the fair way, I think.
Yeah.
And what's the...what's to prevent somebody else from pulling in when you're not home and plugging in?
Right.
Well, if you have a card to turn it on and off, then you've got control of it.
So there needs to be something like that.
Well, okay, I'll adjust the points for those, since it's such a high bar. I actually did find the email finally from Laura Capps on the Energy Committee. She does work for Efficiency Vermont. That's...so I think this was a typo. I don't know if you remember, Dan, but her original email said for commercial, non-residential bonus points or incentive points, it should be, uh, a lower amount of points for the high-performance tier and a highest for the net zero one that you saw on the website, Maggie. So she did recommend, you know, like a five and a 10 points based on whether it's high-performance or net zero.
So the 10 points would be for non-residential buildings that are...
Are net zero.
Net zero.
Yeah, I think that was the intent.
I just think you're gonna get less square footage of non...you know, non-residential buildings and...
So Joe, you're thinking to get 10 points, um, let's see, if a project is mixed, not the building, but the project is mixed, help me understand what you're saying. Are you saying that, given that we have a lot of residential, somebody should be able to do the highest tier of Efficiency Vermont with all their residential?
Yes.
And a lower tier with the non-residential and still get the highest bonus points? 'Cause that's...that would be, we're gonna see more residential, and that's a net gain for the community?
Not only you need to do that, but like, for the five points, right? You've basically prioritized booting up non-residential to the highest energy efficiency ahead of getting residential at the highest efficiency. And the point I'm trying to make is, I think the residential square footage will be much bigger than the non-residential square footage. So I think to get five points, I want residential to be at high-performance level, and then non-residential, I don't know if there's...if there's something in between, you know, just minimum standard in this, you know, high-performance, but if there is, I would pick that, right, for non-residential. And then if they want additional points, right, move the non-residential up to the high-performance category.
I see. So you wanna not give points for residential projects that take it up one level? You want them to take it all the way to the top or nothing? Well, they're both improvements on the minimum energy efficiency, so why wouldn't you wanna give a lower number of points for each tier, the lower tier?
I kinda wanna maximize the, you know, the benefit here before I give points. You know, since I think...I think energy efficiency is, you know, a multiplication of your energy improvement and your square footage that you're actually making the improvement to. So I'm picking the highest energy improvement, and I'm picking which one I think is gonna get more square footage, you know, going forward.
Right.
And I'm prioritizing that to get a base level of points.
But it could be a business that comes in and uses way more power and electricity than all that residential that's there, right?
Well, yes, there could be, but if you look at...if you look at how these growth areas are zoned, right? I think that takes down the odds of that possibility quite a bit.
Yeah, I don't...I don't know.
It's an interesting question. It'd be nice to know how much energy Kenny Drugs uses versus, um, all of the 18 apartments that are in that same pot of development. 'Cause I'm guessing Kenny Drugs, with all of its coolers, for its refrigerated stuff and its lighting, you know, probably uses a good chunk of... For its refrigerated stuff and its lighting, you know, probably uses a good chunk of uh kilowatt hours. Versus that that residential use, but I don't, I don't know how it comes out.
My, I would shut up now.
No, I just, I just don't know how much more a commercial, some commercials use.
Right, Joe, your point is, and I think you're right, we're gonna see a lot more square footage of residential in this community as we build, but that doesn't mean that the residential. With that more square footage is gonna use more energy, it might use less than the smaller square footage of high intensive.
Is there a reason to keep these two?
Different uses, residential and non-residential together, can't we give points for them separately? Even if a project comes in with residential and non-commercial, non-residential commercial in its development, can't we assign points? For those two things separately? And then, and then we can control each one according to standards.
I agree, John, I think that might be the easier way to do it.
I do think, like I said, you need to, you need to. Deal with a mixed use, and maybe the way to do that is just again, square footage, your residential square footage versus your non-residential square footage, whether it's in the same structure or not.
Right.
All right, well, I'll make a note to um tease these apart a bit. In order to be able to deal with them separately, but also to address the mixed use building one, and maybe there's a different way of doing it, rather than just this blunt language of. All residential buildings or all non-residential buildings.
Now, I I realize that Dan and and people on your committee. Work this up, but do we have maybe a comment from the Energy Committee about this question?
I can certainly take it back to them.
Since we've got other questions for.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask, I'll I'll bring it back to them, um, their, their input was early in the process. We didn't hear a lot from them after we had sort of developed this language, so it might be a good idea to just.
Run that back.
Run it back through them again and say, does this make sense to you? Plus, like you said, we need this uh clear rating information from, from uh, from them, from Chuck in particular. So I'll, I'll do that, I'll run it back through their mill.
And to be honest, too, I don't know the difference between a level two and a level three charging station. So I'm not able to comment on that, maybe we need to know. What are the levels of charging stations and what distinguishes them one from the other?
Fair amount of research on that when we were crafting this and um. Also, I was thinking of getting electric cars, so I wanted to know more about it, and it is, it is, as you described, level one is just the household outlet.
One twenty.
One twenty, and just doesn't do the job, you know, it can take you a couple days to to recharge your car. Whereas level two, uh, for a residential use, you plug it in when you get home and you wake up in the morning to go and it's, it's full. A level three charging station, um, are these rapid charging stations? Um, that the state is trying to get more of sprinkled around, especially on the the main highway, uh interstate highway and others. And those stations will give you, I think it's eighty percent charge in twenty minutes or half an hour. But my understanding is that the the electricity and the the infrastructure needed for for delivering that much juice is not something you're, you're gonna be able to see. In a, in a typical development, you know, that that would be a very special uh kind of charging station.
Probably is three phase, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
But it's, the cost of it is huge, so, you know, I priced out what it would cost me at my house to uh put in a level two charger. Either in my garage or attached, you know, running an outlet on the outside, and you know, that runs in the five to six hundred dollar range. Um, and then there's the cost for the charger itself, which a lot of, when you buy new electric cars, they usually throw those in. My memory is, don't quote me, cause I don't, uh, this was wild, my memory is these level three chargers, um, you know, are are ten thousand plus. Dollars to to install.
Do any of the electric vehicles accept a level three charge? I thought there was a difference there too, that some electric vehicles.
That's a good question.
You can't charge level three, they can't take it that fast.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, I know that there are different, um, just like there are different uh. Types of ports for computers, there's different types of charging ports for just stations, so a Tesla charging station is not gonna work for your Nissan Leaf. And unfortunately, there's a little, you know, there's, there's some proprietary stuff going on there, but I ha- I haven't read whether the what the fast chargers, the level three chargers. Are are suitable for only a certain set of cars, that's an interesting question.
Well, in any case, for our purposes, I think the definition here, level two charging, i.e. a two forty volt outlet. I mean, that's the most we could ask, probably.
Well, that also seems suitable.
I'm sorry?
Oh, you, you know that, Amelia, thanks, do you know which ones they are? Gotcha.
Well, it also seems appropriate that, um, you know, for the most part, if these are residential applications. Or working, commercial applications, that people would be either there overnight, if they're, if it's their residence, they have some time to charge. So you don't need the most expensive accessory, and the same might be true for people who go to work and. Hook up while they're at work and hopefully.
Charge during the course of the workday, yeah.
So you don't have to buy a charger, you can just plug into a outlet, right?
That's the slowest.
When you say an outlet, you mean a two forty, so it, um. It's wired, it it's wired for two forty, but there's a. There's more stuff to put on it, it's not like, I don't believe your charger just plugs into a two forty outlet, you know, the the wire from the car to the plug. I think there's, there's additional stuff that they put on it. Uh, some of these systems, at least the ones I was looking into, in Burlington Electric, um, they're smart systems so that uh you can program when the car will charge, so that. Because Burlington Electric, for example, will give you a a discount on your electric rate if you, if you only charge the car during the non-peak hours from like. Uh, eight P M or nine P M through the night.
But you're saying now all cars use the same charger?
Right, yeah, if you have a Tesla.
It's not gonna work out very well.
I know, it'd be nice if there was one standard, just like there's one kind of gasoline.
Charging stations, you might drive up with a Tesla and you can't charge it?
Or vice versa, yeah, you might see a Tesla charging station and drive in and be like, no.
Why would they do that?
Because each, because this is new technology and everybody's trying to, trying to make it their own.
You'd sell more Tesla batteries if you could use them for the regular cars.
Remember V H S and whatever?
V H S and Beta. The good part is, Dennis, that, um, as I understand it, all these, um, all these systems are are smart systems in terms of being a a database and. So if you, if you have the right app on your phone or attack in your car's souped up computer. Um, it'll show you a map and show, tell you where the next nearest one is of, of the type that works for your car.
I'd like to see more required, the last sentence, for non-residential projects, two bonus points will be awarded for providing at least one. Level two char, I mean, one? Can't we ask for more than that?
Well, you could certainly ratchet it up and say, you know, two points for one and, you know, a multiple of that for for, for more than one, uh, you know, up to certain max. At at this point, no, we don't have, all we have in Heinsberg for level two chargers are. Uh, one or maybe two at C V U and I believe two at N R G. And that's it, outside of private homes. So it, you know, they're not, uh, they're not coming in quickly, it's, 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 it's not a. It it's, there's a bit of a bar, you know, to even get that going in the first place, but I see what you're saying, you wanna, you wanna incentivize more.
Well, is this, would it be true of this, because these are new buildings, it's gonna be less expensive to install them as they're being built than as you said? You look at it, five, six hundred dollars, so.
Yeah, the difference is, is that on a a home application, you you have a, you have a structure and often a garage that you can take advantage of. Your your utility systems within, whether it's new construction or otherwise, with a non-residential building, at least the type that Heinsberg sees. There isn't that, so you're gonna have to dedicate, it'll be an outdoor installation and it'll have to be somewhere in your parking lot. But yeah, it absolutely would be cheaper in new construction than it would be for, say, the Obeshaun Plaza to try to put one in after the fact.
So what they mean by provide the infrastructure, not the charger, just the.
Right.
Outlet to plug the charger into.
That's, that was the intention, yes, um, yep. So actually, I'm sorry, to clarify that, for non-residential projects, the language says you need a charging station, at least one, not just infrastructure, but yeah, there has to be one. For residential projects, it means infrastructure to ensure. The ready and proximate access to chargers if that homeowner decides to install one or that apartment complex decides to install them. So yeah, for residential, it's infrastructure to allow it to happen, and for non-residential, it's the actual charging station.
Which will depend on what kind of vehicle. You were trying to charge.
True.
So, you know, do you do just Tesla charging stations in your new project or?
Do we really, do we really wanna get down to that level of specificity, I mean, we'll let them make up their minds on that front. I wonder though, John, to your point, if uh it makes sense on the non-residential side. To have the number of, the bonus points tied to a number of chargers that is also tied to. Either the number of employees or um. Number of parking spaces or?
Percentage of employees who can. Charge their cars?
I'm just thinking that, you know, um, one, one non-residential use uh could be a three thousand square foot business and have. Two employees at it, for which one charging station is, is servicing half of their employee base. Whereas another um commercial establishment could be three thousand square feet and have ten employees. That'd be hard to fit in three thousand square feet, anyway, eight employees, uh, so I don't know if you wanna uh have it vary. Um, or if that's just adding more unnecessary complexity. It it would be easy to simply say, two bonus points for one charger, four bonus points for two chargers, six bonus points for three chargers, and just move it up, move it up the scale that way.
Yeah.
That's fine.
And you might even start with one bonus point for one charger, two for two.
Okay.
Three for three, I mean, let's.
One bonus point for each charger.
Yeah, a bonus point for each charger and.
Yep.
Yeah, and a hundred points if you run to work.
Or ride a bicycle. There are companies, there are companies that gave benefits to their employees if they rode their bicycles.
Okay, well, um, any other ideas on the other bonus point systems or changes to the language here? If not, I'll just make the changes and run it through the Energy Committee that we just talked about.
Do you know what this clear rating renewable technology business was about? Was that about renewable, durable, recyclable building materials?
No, it was, my understanding was it was, it was the use of renewable technologies in the, in the construction, so. Are you using cold, cold climate heat pumps, are you, um, are you using solar, um, are you using heat exchangers, um? Geothermal? Chuck seemed to, Chuck was very smitten with it and said that it's, it's very comprehensive in its look and and kind of like, uh. I don't know if anybody's heard of the HERS rating, which is an energy efficiency rating for buildings, that it was sort of similar to that, like there was a hundred point scale and. Um, but it was focused on use of renewables and and it would give you a score based on your complete package of of what you were building.
So it didn't include the difference between using fiberglass bad insulation and blown in cellulose?
I don't think so. I, I don't think so, I, like I said, I never saw the actual system, um, so I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I don't think so, he he described it as being more focused on, on. Renewable stuff and not efficiency stuff.
So should we run some of those uh scenarios?
Well, yeah, I wanted to, since this is the last criteria, if you're all good with that, um. Ralph had some suggestions backtracking to the criteria we talked about last time, um, which we can talk about, but yeah, I wanted to run you, run a few actual projects through this so you could see. Where they would land and maybe have a discussion about this whole concept of a minimum score requirement. So, um, we might as well run the same ones that Dan's committee ran. But we should rerun them, uh, so the minutes of the January twenty-second meeting of Dan's allocation committee. Um, has a rundown of these projects and how they scored, but the system has changed a bit, so we should run them new. So the first one that the committee ran through the mill was the Green Street project, uh, recent development project. Um, and that's the, the apartment housing, uh, apartment development right across Charlotte Road, it's, it's got twenty-two. It it built twenty-two units of affordable rental housing, and it had an existing building on the one sixteen frontage that was five, a five-unit apartment house. Um, and also, a first phase of Green Street built two single-family homes and had, um. Placeholder lots for two more, which haven't yet been built, so that's, that's the sum total of the project. If we walk it through the scoring system, the first criteria is public infrastructure. So awarding points to project that provide infrastructure, uh, that goes above and beyond what would have been required otherwise. When we scored this, um, we gave it some points in this category for. The sidewalk that they were required to build, um, along Charlotte Road. So there's a little bit of a question in my mind as to whether, since it was required anyways, if they should have, if they would have gotten any points for this, had we been reviewing this in the first get-go. But it was a sidewalk that was not on their property and, um. They had an alternate sidewalk that connects their property to one sixteen near the Silver Street intersection, so. Questionable, um, as to whether you would give them points for this, the, in this part.
Less points for making their sidewalks out of blacktop in the. They're supposed to be concrete?
That initial sidewalk, uh, on the initial stretch of Green Street, no, we won't go there, Dennis, but, um. So again, uh, the, in the original approval, the D R B said, um, you need two ways for your people to get out to the existing sidewalk system. Um, and and the Charlotte Road, uh, frontage, or not frontage, the Charlotte Road connection is an important one to get people up to Lampman's and not have them have to take a longer route to get there. So what's your sense, would you, would you, uh? Would you give them points for that, uh, since it's kind of off property and not a hundred percent, uh? You know, there's a, there's a qualitative judgment about whether it was required, or would you say no?
How much sidewalk would that require?
Uh, it was from the driveway here, from Green Street up to one sixteen intersection, I'm trying to remember how many feet of sidewalk that was.
Past Georgia's house and past the house on the corner to the intersection.
To the intersection, yep, I could measure it for you, but that, that's, that's what it was.
Would they be required, under the regs, to provide the entire?
So the D R B ruled that they, they had to provide it. Did the regs say that they had to provide it, it was a conversation and a, and a qualitative determination by the board that they didn't argue with, but.
I would say no.
So, yes and no, so we'll run it both ways, um, so we'll run the no first, so let's say that that was deemed necessary. They, they did not provide any other public infrastructure that I'm aware of, um, that wasn't already compelled within the project. So there are sidewalks in there and the public has access to them, um, which is a benefit. But I don't think there was anything else, uh, that they actually created for public infrastructure. So let's say in the no cate, in the no scenario, zero points for public infrastructure, so then we move on to job creation. This was a, this did have a non-residential lot included in it, it was, there was supposed to be, uh, and there is a lot. It was there was supposed to be uh and there is a lot right on the corner of Charlotte Road and uh Green Street. That Rob, Bast and Macrude were actually gonna relocate their their business, their architectural firm too. Um and then lease some additional space um. So.
Isn't that questionable?
Not there.
We talked about that, that.
Right.
What I that's questionable with ever can use that lot.
Absolutely, yep, uh but at the time it was proposed, that that's what they would have, they took, that's what they said. Is that our plan is to relocate there and move our business, so under the job creation point system. Um it says at least two existing jobs relocated from a business located outside the service area. Or from a home based business within the service area. I I think they could have argued, I think they would have gotten those two points based on how this project was proposed. Uh cuz this was this was that that is a home based business out, you know, out on uh.
Yeah, Rob.
The rural part of town, it's right at Rob's house, yep. So but that's all they would have gotten because they didn't have a specific business plan for any other businesses. And they didn't have a s- uh number of employees that they could have said, oh, and we're gonna lease space to business X with six employees. Give us more points for that. It was speculative.
I used an interest to to move two people from their home to the village area.
Why is there interest in that?
Why why is it in our interest to do that?
Why do they get points for that?
Yeah, why would you get points for that? If you had additional employees other than yourselves, the people that are doing the project, maybe. That you didn't already have at the other location.
Right, so so this is a good way to have, for example, maybe you wanna maybe you wanna change the criteria. Um my notes don't indicate that you that you wanted to change this criteria. So now it sounds like maybe you wanna change this criteria.
I don't think we're interested in importing from other towns. I don't think we're interested in moving in town.
Right, well, they're already in town, they're just.
Well, it is a way to, it is a way to provide an incentive for for Heinsberg based businesses to. Um especially home based businesses to to come to the village to expand. Um but if you want it to be just focused on real new jobs, not relocated jobs, I that makes sense.
Well, if it's new jobs, it doesn't matter whether the job, the existing jobs are in Heinsberg or not.
Right.
For getting new jobs.
I'm just looking at the criteria on page two, which which says at least two new jobs created. Or relocation of existing jobs from an area outside of the service area. So uh what I'm hearing is scratch the um scratch this, the the relocation from a home based business or from uh. Yeah, okay.
So in this case.
So they would, go ahead, Barb.
They did not do this, what happens to their points?
Yeah. Right, well, let's let's run the number first and then we can talk about that scenario. And so the number is zero because they didn't get any points because we just changed the criteria, so.
There's more to it than them just moving from their house. I mean, now you have a new building that's providing more taxes.
Sure.
Right.
So I think we need to think about it before we scratch it.
Well, in a different category.
I mean, just moving a company from Williston to Heinsberg is not really that big a deal, not with Act sixty and everything else that we do. It's more if we move a company from Connecticut up here to. You know what I mean? Moving from Williston to Heinsberg is not, it's not bending benefiting Vermont that much.
Right.
Or even, I mean, it benefits Heinsberg cuz you get new taxes maybe, but those taxes are kinda dispersed. You know what I mean?
But your point is there is value in having somebody.
I think so because you have a new building that.
Building into a more commercial setting.
You're getting taxes from their house and now you're getting taxes from a new building.
Mm hmm.
Right?
Yeah, I think the committee felt that 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 that's a way to add vitality in the village. Um I don't know that we had that conversation. Do you remember, Dan?
But that's about the business. I I thought we were talking about people working in the business.
Right, so this.
That's two different things.
This criteria is is about um the title of it is job creation, so it is about that.
Right.
But this is this is uh an area where we we went a little bit beyond that. We went a little bit beyond that to also say, and we 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 would like to give points for businesses that are expanding and moving into the. Village, even if they're not adding.
Well, I think expanding would be in the building because that's where you're gonna derive the m- more income for the town. You're e- expanding the grand list. That's a big change.
Mm hmm.
Well, beyond that too, I you one could certainly argue that um if you get more jobs in the area where we want the quote village to grow. Um you know, you're utilizing existing infrastructure, presumably people can walk to lunch. I guess they could walk into their kitchen to make lunch too, but um.
Right.
Not my not my biggest window of doubt.
I just.
But that's two categories to me. The building is one category, the job is another category, I think.
You wanna also analyze the personality of the person that's moving.
Well, you'd like to. It's just a big deal.
He's the finest offer singer I know.
And a small house builder.
Yeah.
I I just don't see how how this can work when you're promising to do something to bring some jobs. And and it doesn't happen.
We need a section on Tyrene.
That's that's a separate, that's a separate issue, John. You know, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen, then they have to deal with the consequences. They gotta tear the building down, but you know.
Well, now that I would agree with, if they can't create the jobs, take the building away.
But that's back to my point, when you have a building, there's something concrete there in more of the ways than one. If you have a j- jobs, it's great, I'm all for the jobs, but there's nothing concrete there that that they're gonna stay or happen.
Right, remember.
So it's very different.
This is all about how we how we prioritize our allocation of water and wastewater. That's all we're doing with this. So and it happens early in the review process, so yeah, there's gonna be some flex. Uh to how this comes out, but the committee's thought was that rather than have a criteria that says, we will give you points if you build a bigger and bigger and bigger building. Cuz it will, they'll be worth more on the grand list, they wanted to incentivize job creation. If somebody came with an actual plan that was, you know, passed a straight face test.
Which is good.
Yeah.
But.
But it's different.
The example that you that we're talking about is uh whether or not Bast and Rude would move their business. To a new location.
Yep.
That's two people, maybe they doubled in size, they've got some draftsman and and now there's four people. But what about NRG's original plan to develop? They had multiple large buildings that were gonna bring new jobs, multiple jobs to the town. And they were gonna get a high rating in terms of water and sewer allocation because of that.
No, they they did not have, they were they were doing this project on speculation. They had no tenants lined up.
No, I know.
So so they would have gotten zero points for for this job creation category.
How did how does Bast and Rude, because they're they're working and they are gonna work in a new location, they can get points.
Right, cuz they're an actual business with quantified number of employees that was seeking to relocate. Some, I guess the better example is Kenny Drugs.
Yeah.
When that developer came, he said, I have a tenant, I have an agreement with them and they can tell you how many employees will staff them. And we know what Kenny Drugs are, so it's not like we had to wonder.
Okay.
So that in that case, it was like, yeah, if if they were before the this system, you'd say, tell me how many employees and I'll give you points for that. Whereas the NRG example, the most recent one that Jan submitted that had allocation for a hundred and fifty employees.
Right.
Um.
But nobody lined up to do it.
No business plan, no, so yeah, no points uh.
This also is from a home based business within the service area, so it's like moving from the right side of the street to the left side of the street.
Right, that's uh yeah, I thought it was from outside of the service.
So you're gonna have to argue stronger, Dennis, cuz the majority seems to think we should, you should just delete this relocation stuff. It's gotta be.
I thought it was outside of the service area.
No, the the second half of the.
What she's reading.
Sentence.
What is the service area for Bast and Roots Architectural Firm?
Sorry, that's referring to the water and sewer service area.
Okay.
But if if most of you are on the page of, let's just make this about new jobs, not relocated jobs, then I'll just strike that. And Dennis can hone his argument for next time.
I'm fine.
Okay, all right, so we were running through an example, um and the example's helping us, hey, that's a good thing. So uh public infrastructure for the Green Street project, zero. Um job creation, zero. Housing needs. Here's where they're gonna get their points, right? So um. Seventy five percent or more of the new homes constitute perpetually affordable housing. They meet that highest test. So they would, they would be eligible for um at least eight points in this criteria. And then we would wanna walk down the bonus points because the maximum, the maximum score in this is fifteen points. So they're already at eight easily. The question is, can they get higher than that? Um and the first bonus point uh talks about greater affordability and and awarding points for each home that's. Uh more affordable than the than the the default standard. Um there's gonna be a little guesswork here, but because Champlain Housing Trust was the the turnkey. Owner, I believe that that, I don't know how many units unfortunately, but I believe that a good chunk of those units. Are in fact affordable to people well below the eighty percent of median income. So although I'm doing a little guesswork here, um.
Just say it's fifteen.
I I think they're gonna get the max. I think they're gonna get seven more bonus points in this category and they're gonna, they're gonna max out at at fifteen. They certainly didn't provide any senior housing or assisted living, so there's no bonus points for that. There's no affordable senior housing, so there's no bonus points for that. Um yeah, so it would only be under the greater affordability section, but I think they would max out, so I think we're at fifteen. Um at fifteen points so far, so then we move to stormwater treatment and um. This project didn't do anything more than what they were required to do, so zero points for that. Um then we move to village proximity and redevelopment. This is the category that Ralph has some comments uh that we can talk about afterwards. To maybe tune this up um. And I'm trying to remember from our conversations, you you really did wanna hack up this category. Um.
Let's go with what we got.
Let's go with what's on the page.
The way it is.
So this this project is as close as they get, so it would get um under the allocation committee's recommendation. It would get eight points.
Yep.
Um and it didn't create any new units in an existing structure. It did have an existing structure that that was old, uh it had a five unit apartment building up on one sixteen.
Right, but it did already have two existing houses that they developed at an earlier time?
Yes, yes, um but this, these bonus points accrue for projects that utilize an existing structure. Um they they didn't utilize any existing structures. Those those two houses were there previously, they didn't, they didn't add it. They didn't turn them into duplexes or anything like that, so I I don't think they'd get any bonus points. They are, but if we just look at the project as a whole, um so in any case, uh I think they'd be at eight points. So add that to the fifteen from the housing section, we're up to twenty three.
Yep.
So then we move on to energy efficiency and renewable technology, and that's the category we just uh touched and talked about. Um. And my my understanding is that because this was an Act two fifty project. And Act two fifty projects have to meet a higher level, what what's called the stretch code. Um. I I think that that's that stretch code is at the efficiency Vermont's first level, not a hundred percent sure about that.
Okay.
Um.
Five points.
I think five points, yeah, I think five points. Clearly, there's there were no electric vehicle charging in there and renewable energy, there isn't any.
How do they classify that project, non residential?
No, it's residential.
Like if you have a rental.
It's still residential. We don't differentiate between rental and ownership. If people live there, it's residential. Yep, so let's give it five uh and contingent, and so we're at twenty eight. So there's Green Street, twenty eight. Let's do another one, cuz this is kinda fun and helpful. Um so the the next one that the committee did was. Uh da 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 Thistle Hill, another relatively recent development, fully residential. Off of Mechanicsville Road. Um so again, just walk through the criteria, public infrastructure. They were not required to do the trails that they installed. Those, that was, that was them and the Trails Committee coming to a nice agreeable. Way to use the open space, so when we scored it at the committee level. Um we wanted to give them points for that trail network, that they not only gave the public the right to use. But they actually installed them as well. Um so I think per our our uh. Our scoring system, uh that would be two. Um what else did we give them for public infrastructure? That was it. So moving right along, job creation, zero, no jobs. Housing needs, um it was all market rate, there was no affordable housing. And there was supposed to be senior housing and that went away, so.
Not their fault.
So zero.
They didn't have anybody to park.
Um.
No, really, really.
So stormwater.
At that point, there was nothing out there.
Stormwater treatment, they they followed the state guidelines. There was nothing, nothing above and beyond in the stormwater treatment uh arena. Now, they did um they did create a stormwater treatment, one stormwater treatment area. That you might argue provided visual interest and addressed other planning standards in our regulations. There was a lot of talk during the review about that, stormwater pond closest to Mechanicsville Road and how they were gonna design it so that. Kids could, you know, look for frogs, it wouldn't be fenced, it would have a flat level um grassy area around around the edge of it. So you could actually, you know, walk around it or do what what you want. Um there's no significant wildlife habitat. I I wouldn't argue, but um but there was a lot of discussion and they did design it differently, I think, than some would be. So I think you could argue that they could get six points um for that.
It's attractive. Yeah, more than ever. By me, according to me.
Yeah.
Maybe you guys don't agree, speak up.
I think it provides for some some minor level of recreational use for outdoor enjoyment, for at least the people who live there who own it can, you know, walk down and.
You can sit on the park bench and look over at it.
Sure, or sit or sit with their kids right there and watch your kid, you know, learn about red winged blackbirds and.
Whatever.
Fish.
True, probably is.
So let's give them, let's give them six points um for the benefit there, so uh we had two for the trails, we had six for stormwater, that's eight. Um now we're onto village proximity and under just what was drafted, not what your revised version will look like. Um they are, they are uh less than a quarter mile from the post office, so that would be eight, so we're at sixteen now. Um and energy efficiency and renewable uh technology, this was also an Act two fifty project and therefore had to meet. No, I'm sorry, it was an older Act two fifty project that did not have to meet the stretch code. So I know they built it above the the required minimums, but I'm not clear that they would have met. Efficiency Vermont's higher tier standard, so I would say zero on that, just.
Sure.
I think when the committee scored it, we actually did give them points for a level up, but I'm I'm not convinced that it would get that. So um what what were we at? Uh sixteen? Okay, so Thistle Hill was sixteen. Somebody refresh memory, what was Green Street again?
Twenty eight.
Okay, all right, the next one wa- that the committee looked at was um the Meadow Miss project. That Alan and Nancy Norris are currently building at the south end of the village, so it's twenty four units of condos. Um and again, if we walk through the um the standards. Actually, when we did this as a committee, Dan, uh we gave them some points for public infrastructure. Cuz there's a thousand feet of uh sidewalk along one sixteen connecting to the school. But that was absolutely required at by the DRB. The DRB said this project does what does not work unless there's that sidewalk connection.
Right.
So I think actually they wouldn't, they would get zero.
Yeah, okay.
There are no trails connecting to public spaces, although they did grant an easement for a trail connecting through to the school. And I'm looking to see if there's anything else in the public infrastructure category.
So Alex, they would've had to have constructed that trail like, um, Thistle Hill did in order to get some points?
Yeah.
Not just give an easement?
The way this is worded is trails that connect, um, including easements and dedication of land. Meaning you gotta build the trail and give it over.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
So yeah, it has to actually be there. So I think, I'm just quickly reading through this again, that we are at, um, we are at zero. I will say however, that- Meadow Mist, the Norris Project on the south side of the village, across from Buck Hill Road. I will say that, um, they got twenty-four units through our density bonus provisions in the regs. And one of the ways they did that was, um, through a green building program. So their project is, was built under the National Home Builders Green Building, um, certification program and they had to, there, there are multiple facets to that that go well beyond just how efficient the building is constructed. It has to do with where you get your materials from, how you dispose of them, how you deal with water use on the site. I'm, I'm saying that because, um, one of our bonus points in this section of, of, um, public infrastructure was, um, ecological practices. And my notes from your discussion was, better tighten this up and, you know, see what that really means. So there's some question in my mind as to whether they might've been able to argue points for that based on their green building. Let's say no, I just wanted to give you a heads up that that was there. So we're at zero points, move to job creation, there's no jobs, it's all residential, zero. Housing needs, um, there's nothing above and beyond what our inclusionary zoning requires, so zero points there. Stormwater treatment, again, they're just meeting, they're meeting the requirements, they're not going above and beyond. There's no real green stormwater infrastructure involved in this project, as far as I am concerned. So zero points there. Village proximity, um, they meet the, the half a mile, so they would get the four points.
They almost border the school property, don't they?
What's that?
They almost border the school property.
They, they are very close to that, yes.
Gotta be less than half a, way less than half a mile.
Probably more than a quarter, though.
Right.
Possibly, yeah.
More than a quarter cuz the way it would be measured would be from the school, not from the property, but from the building.
Right, okay, yeah.
So we would, we would give them four points for being within a half a mile. And then on the energy efficiency side, um, I think that they, this project would meet the next tier up for Efficiency Vermont. That was part of their green building program, so they would get five. So what were we at, five plus four?
Nine.
Just nine, so Meadow Mist-
Everything is really low.
So how come they had to build a sidewalk and New South Farm didn't?
For a couple of different reasons. One, uh, different zoning district. When New South Farm was developed, um, it was in the rural residential one district. We hadn't rezoned that yet to, uh, to village, um, or to residential one. And so in that zoning district, sidewalks weren't required, the way they are in the village growth area now. When, when Meadow Mist was developed, it was part of a village growth area zoning district and that requirement was stronger. The other reason was that, um, New South Farm was connected to the Russell Property Trail System and so there was some thought that there would be pedestrian access on the trail system and then a similar sort of informal path down to one sixteen.
Right.
So yeah, those are the, those are the principal reasons.
Refresh my memory again, uh, in terms of just the substance of each one of these. Thistle Hill has how many units?
Thistle Hill is, um, thirty-two.
Some are duplexes, but most are single family.
Yeah, there are four units, there are two duplex buildings, so there are four units in duplexes, the rest are single-family homes.
How much did that project's, excuse me, score again?
Meadow Mist, the Norris Project or Thistle Hill? So, uh, let me, let's just take it from the start. Green Street got twenty-eight points, Thistle Hill got sixteen, and Meadow Mist got nine.
And it was really the affordability criteria?
That boosted Green Street, absolutely, yep. So let's do-
They're all fairly low.
Right, right, so this is, this, this speaks to why the committee recommended a fairly low minimum score. But not so low that, that some of these projects wouldn't have had to have done something more to get their allocation. Let's do, let's do, uh, one more. Is there one that you would like to run through that maybe these projects don't speak to? We could do Creekside, do you wanna do just the, the initial phase that was the residential development? Or do you wanna do the second phase that was the more mixed-use, uh, one?
Let's do that one.
The second phase, okay. So Heinsberg Center Two is the name of that project, or sorry, not Two, that's the next one. Heinsberg Center is the name of that project. So that is, Heinsberg Center is comprised of eighteen apartments. One of which is, has to be affordable. And it's Kenny Drugs, so, uh, I think that's eleven thousand plus or minus square, square feet of, uh, retail space. And then, uh, Parkside Cafe, which is three thousand square feet of restaurant. And, uh, D Physical Therapy, three thousand square feet of physical therapy. And-
Commercial.
Commercial, yep. And then the building behind, um, Kenny Drugs where Blue Cottage and the new, um, leather handbag business, the name for which eludes me, um, is there. So that's three thousand square feet again of, uh, mixed, you know, multiple commercial uses. Um, and that's the project. So if we run that through our scoring system, the first category is public infrastructure. And, um, let's see, what did they do that they weren't required to do?
Put things closer than they were required to do.
I, I would say zero. I don't think that, I think everything they, they did a lot. I, I don't wanna minimize that project. There's, there's public sidewalks, they, they, they were able to convince V-Trans to allow them to do on-street parking on one sixteen, which was kind of a revolution. But none of that would fit these bone, these point criteria. So let's move to job creation. I keep using this as the example. They did bring a, a known quantity to town, which we had been asking for ever since I came to work here. We want a pharmacy, we want a pharmacy, they brought Kenny Drugs. So, um, now how many employees does Kenny Drugs actually have? I-
Not enough. They have, and, and maybe some are part-time and some are full-time.
Let me, uh, let me do a quick, let me do a quick look back here, since I can access their original, uh, proposal. I think I can tell you how many jobs they said Kenny's was gonna bring at that time. I don't know how many work there today, I imagine none of you do either, right?
Well, it's almost, oh, it's three people behind the drugstore counter.
Oh, that, I bet there's more than seven.
Close enough.
I, I think, I think Dennis is probably right.
He's close, behind the drug counter, there's always at least three.
Yep.
Three at the cash register, like Ralph said, that's six.
One cooler killer.
And at least a couple stacking shop, doing shelves.
Why are you finding three at the cash register, I'm just curious?
When you try to steal a candy bar.
I've seen three several times, it doesn't mean that all the registers are open, but they're mulling around doing stuff.
On time of day, maybe.
But guess what? Later. Let's say eight, Alex.
Hold on, just give me one moment. I, I might be able to give you a real number based on their old application.
Yeah, that would be fun to hear.
It's more than eight, cuz-
Yeah, oh, I'm sure.
Well, so while I'm looking, you guys confer over what kind of employees they have to be based on the language we wrote. Is it full-time equivalents, is it?
Yeah, cuz some of those people, a lot of them could be part-time, we don't know.
Those are bonus.
I think you want FTE.
Yeah, FTE.
Well, don't say what you want, say, look at what the language says, and then, and then tell me what you want.
But not everybody wants to be FTE.
Yeah, right. Can we add them up?
Tough, you have to work.
Full-time, full-time equivalent is adding, it doesn't say that everybody's full-time.
Averaging at least thirty hours per week. Okay, thirty, yeah, okay, that's helpful. Averaging, that's fine, yeah, whatever, that's good, Maggie.
I didn't make it up, I'm just ready.
You're ready, I, okay, good. Thank you for looking, Maggie. I know the allocation committee did talk at length about that question, how, you know, how many hours and all that.
Employee benefits?
Okay, so here it is. Hours of operation, seven AM to seven PM, possibly half-day on Saturdays. Applicant estimates, four to seven employees.
They're filling that easily.
Oh no, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, that's not the Kenny's, um, that was for the other speculative building. I'm still looking for the, oh, um, twelve.
Good.
Twelve of our employees are anticipated, not necessarily working at the same time.
Right.
And I'm sorry, they did not indicate how many hours those twelve employees would be working.
Let's give them ten points and move on, shall we?
Okay, we should.
Yeah, good idea, Maggie.
So we had zero, we had twelve, um-
But what about the other buildings? Parkside, DPT?
So that's a good question. All of those other buildings were built on spec, meaning they could not demonstrate how many employees there would be. So that section I started to read, four to seven employees, that was their guess, and the way this is written, we would say, we know there're gonna be people in there, but we're not giving you any points, cuz you don't actually have a real number.
Alright, ten points.
What about the bonus points for job creation?
So, uh, is it in a priority sector? No.
No, livable wage.
Is it a livable wage?
Doubt it.
I, I, I strongly doubt it, uh, but I couldn't-
The three who are working in the pharmacy, they must be getting a livable wage. I sure hope they are, if they're giving me my drugs.
Right. You're right, Ralph.
Well, that's a good point, the pharmacist might be.
And the pharmacist.
But this says bonus points if at least two-thirds of the new jobs created pay a livable wage.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I don't think they meet, I bet you didn't meet that test.
Okay.
Right.
Now, two-thirds again for employee benefits, um, that I don't know. Maybe they did provide that.
I, well, again, if they're not doing livable wage, they're probably keeping hours low as well, maybe they're all part-time.
Don't know.
We don't know.
So do you wanna, do you wanna, uh, err on the side of, uh, conservatism and just say twelve points for the jobs and not no bonus points?
Yeah.
Okay. Housing needs, um, so that project had, um-
What, what, I'm sorry to bring you back.
That's okay.
Mixed use, it says there, four bonus points will be awarded if the business is located in a building that also includes residential homes.
Well, that's a really good point, Ralph, so this- This, this is a good, this is a good example to run through, thank you for the suggestion, Barb.
So would they get, would they get four or eight, since there are two buildings that have, that are mixed use?
They didn't have-
There are three, actually.
Three, right.
But they didn't have anybody, any tenants.
They didn't have those tenants.
But they knew, I mean, clearly they're-
They were creating a space for commercial, but they didn't have a business to come in there.
Ah, but it took a long time.
Yeah, so it's a really, a really good clarification question. The way this is worded, it says, in, in a building that also includes residential homes.
So that's for-
But it says if the business, the business, it's anticip, this, this was written anticipating a singular business and, and what's combined with it, is it in a mixed-use building?
But like Barb said, it's true, it did take a long time, other than the bakery for people to move in.
But, but it was designed to be mixed-use buildings and that, we, we fought hard for that. In fact, the developer did not, I remember originally, developer said, I can't do that, that, that's difficult for me to do.
And he filled it all now.
And then he flipped that and made it work, and now it's, it's a real, it's a real model.
Does it happen to be a mixed-use building or a mixed-use development?
Well, so that's a good question, and this, in this, the way this is worded, it's the building itself. It has to be, you get points if you've got, you know, mixed use in a building.
And I think as it should be for a project. You know, if we wanna encourage mixed use, which we clearly do.
Yep.
So there are three buildings that are mixed use.
Yeah, so is that four points?
I mean, you, you could have separate bonuses for projects that, 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 that don't accomplish that, but do accomplish, uh, a mix of uses in different buildings. But yeah, I think the allocation committee was focused on the building by building.
Your, your zoning, your zoning already requires a mixed-used area, so.
Right, we should be seeing that anyway.
Yeah.
You're right. That's not really an above and beyond thing.
Right.
So I think though, this is, this begs the question of needing to clarify this bonus point section because is it four points? Or is it twelve points? And how, and how much specificity do you need with the business involved? Can it be a business based on speculation?
Four bonus points will be awarded if the building contains both commercial and residential.
Your argument about building the spec, they didn't have businesses to go in there, so if it is the business, there was no business to go in there.
Right, which is why I think this needs to be clarified, because the, the, he was very clear when he brought this proposal forward that the Bristol Bakery building was going to be mixed-use, was going to have a business at the bottom. I think at the time he even thought it might be a bakery, cuz he was courting Bristol Bakery, but he couldn't commit to it, and so he said, you know, I may, that may be revisionist history. I know he, I know he, I know he guaranteed it would be mixed-use. I, I don't know that he knew what the tenant would be.
Just that building?
Yeah, now you're making me go back in time. I, it, it was definitely Kenny's and that building he was clear about. And the rest of them were shown on the plan, but they all had slightly different, there was a slightly different concept of how each of those would be. So I think in this case, it, it might be fairer to say, um, you get four points for that Bristol Bakery building cuz you told us exactly that that would be mixed-use and the rest of them maybe not.
Even though they are mixed-use?
Well, yeah, but remember, we are, I guess you're right. We could, we could award the points based on how it looks today. Or we can award the points based on how it was proposed at the time. Maybe it's easier to just do it based on what it looks like today, since it's done and we know what's there.
And that sec, the last one, the one he's just filled, he left, he sat open with that for a long time.
Right.
Which, good for him, that he didn't come back and ask to change it, or, I don't know, maybe you wouldn't allow that, but. He did have, that was a long time to sit on something with no income.
He, he came back and changed that project probably a dozen times.
I know, yes, I, other things, but not that.
The building behind Kenny's is still partially empty on the first floor.
Yep, there's one available here in that one.
There is still one more?
Yeah. Well, we're just trying to run this through the scoring now. We have discovered a, a place to clarify, which is, I appreciate that. Clarify, uh, how many mixed-use buildings? Et cetera. Um, for the purposes of this example though, um, what do you wanna do? Give them twelve points for three mixed-use buildings or four points?
Four points.
Four, it is, alright, so we're at sixteen. Moving on to housing needs. Did not go above and beyond, did not provide greater affordability, senior housing, uh, or assisted living, so zero. Just provided one affordable units, that, that's what inclusionary zoning compelled. Stormwater treatment, if Mitch were here, he might try to argue differently cuz he designed the stormwater system, uh, when he was in the private sector, but I, I, I'm pretty sure it's just, uh, it meets the state requirements, there's nothing, um, above and beyond there. And it, unlike Thistle Hill, there's nothing about that stormwater treatment pond behind Blue Cottage that, you know, sort of serves another purpose recreationally or ecologically.
So how far is he from the police station?
Right.
Pretty darn close.
Pretty darn close, so I think that one would get the eight points, so we're up to twenty-four. And on energy efficiency and renewable technology, actually, um, Kenny Drugs was supposed to be a LEED-certified building.
He said was?
Yeah, what happened?
Uh, my memory of it is that, uh, they were on track to be, to, to get that certification and it required, um, additional verification and measurements post-construction to see how all the systems operated. And, and to be honest with you, I don't remember whether they actually nailed it or not. They did get their CO, we never took enforcement actions against them, at least not on that issue. So either they made it or they made it close enough for our former zoning administrator to say, good enough. Anyways, I brought that up only because I'm wondering if they would get points for efficiency measures. Anyways, I brought that up only because I'm wondering if they would get points for efficiency measures.
I don't think LEED is a double one of...
Yeah, I don't think it is either, so I think we would say zero.
It used to be a big deal.
So, that, that brings us to 24 for Heinsberg Center project. So, you've got four projects that scored between nine and 28 points. As Ralph mentioned, the Green Street project scored the highest, because it was, there was so much, you know, so much affordable in that project. But, you know, your standard residential development, like Thistle Hill or Meadow Mist, you know, scored low. Nine and 16 points. So, what the, what the committee recommended was a minimum point value of 20.
20 for residential and mixed-use, 10 for commercial.
Yep.
Right, which, you know, to, to me, if, if you look at all the criteria here, and what's trying to be done with the town, there are a lot of lofty goals. And you're actually going to get very little of them accomplished at 10 and 20.
Well, I think the committee felt the opposite, Joe, that, that given how low these, these properties score, that if we could get more Green Street projects, which is a lot of affordable housing, that would be a good thing. And that, and that we would, we would force projects like Meadow Mist and Thistle Hill to actually do something more than what they did. But, I think that a fair number of these points are coming from that village proximity criteria that I don't think many of you liked. So, Heinsberg Center 1, for example, got eight points from that, right? So, if, if they didn't get those eight points, they would be below the 20 mark, and they would have had to have done something different. But your comment, Joe, is you'd like to see that maybe be higher?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, if, if the, if the number is low enough, a, a, a small, a small little kick-up is a huge percentage, you know? If I go from 18 to 20, that's, that's better than a 10% improvement on, on what they did. It's still pretty marginal. I mean, if you really want to...
What was the most points you could get?
If you really want to encourage competition.
So, it's a 100-point scale?
Yeah.
But no project would ever get that many points, because there's points that accrue for job creation and for affordable housing. And, you know, we're just, unlikely we're going to see a project that does all those things in one fell swoop.
I don't understand why they don't get some points, just for even providing housing, since there's such a shortage. And you're only giving points for affordable housing.
Well, the, you know, the $400,000, 3,000 square foot home isn't really doing a lot to solve the hazard.
But I, Thistle Hill is not anywhere near that size.
In the zoning, they're already allowed to put the housing in. Right, so, I mean, that's really by right.
A lot of people from other locations in Heinsberg and bigger houses have moved to Thistle Hill.
I'm not arguing big house, small house, I'm just saying...
No, but I'm just saying that, that one, whether it's big house, small house, or just the fact that they've made the move. A lot of people have moved from the outer areas into Thistle Hill.
But we're not, we're not going to give points for building a house.
Are you going to reward somebody for doing exactly what your zoning says you're going to do?
There's a shortage of housing, and it's a, it, it, to me, that's a plus. It's a plus, and look how quick those apartments filled up. I mean, that's a plus, even though it's not, affordable housing is wonderful. I'm not against it at all. I don't want you to think that.
Smaller, smaller housing, I mean, I would say that, for smaller, just smaller homes.
And Thistle Hill houses are not very big.
But we're, yeah, we're not going to...
But all these units over here are affordable, but you don't own them.
Right.
So, I don't, I wouldn't give as much for that either.
You like ownership housing?
Right, me too.
Be affordable.
I would agree with that, too. They have more of a vested interest.
Right now though, interestingly, our, the housing needs assessment that, that the Affordable Housing Committee had commissioned, said that, that what we, what we need more of is rental. But that Heinsberg is, when compared to other communities across the state, we are skewed in the, in the ownership and single-family home category of housing.
You build an affordable house that someone can own.
Right, it's hard for people to do.
It's difficult, yeah, unless they're...
I mean, when you're paying taxes.
Unless they're smaller, and, and you can do a lot more of them.
Yeah, but the houses out Butler Farms, just past Butler Farms, those are tiny houses. They're still selling for $400,000.
Right.
They are.
And look at what...
And they're tiny.
What, what the Net Zero houses sold for, I mean, I was shocked at that. And, and they're not holding their value great. And they're small houses.
Let's get back to, let's get back to the scoring system. Are you proposing that we give points for...
Providing housing?
I just think creating housing is a great thing.
Well, one could argue that, okay, we're giving points for job creation. And one could argue, I mean, providing housing is, you know, maybe there's some criteria around what we provide.
Right.
But we're thinking about, I guess.
Yeah.
I mean, if we don't have people that live here, then there's not going to be any job creation either. So, it's like, I feel like they complement each other. Like which one?
It also speaks to a concern that Dan was pretty vocal about during the allocation committee meetings. That, and I don't want to speak for you, Dan, but the concern that, but by having a minimum score requirement, it changes this from a competitive system, where we just decide which project serves, you know, is better for the community than another. We change it into a hurdle to jump over. And if you can't, if you can't clear that hurdle, you don't just get lower in the ranking. You, you can't do, you can't get your allocation. You're literally stopped from develop, doing your project, in a way that feels more like a zoning requirement, like a setback or something. And so, Dan was, you know, had concerns about setting this too high, for fear that we might eliminate projects entirely. And I bring that up, A, because it's, it's worth talking about, but also because it relates back to Marie's point about whether there should be points for just creating housing in general, not just affordable housing. If, if we saw a, a, a housing project come in, that, you know, met all of the requirements under our zoning, and met all of the, the building efficiency standards that the state requires, and, and met all the Act 250, you know, approvals, but did not go above and beyond in, in these categories, would we want to say no to it? Would, would we want to say, "Well, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't reach your minimum score." And so, we, we only want housing projects that are, you know, a cut above the rest of, of what's happening in Vermont. And I think the allocation committee's answer was, "Yes, we do." It's a limited resource, this allocation, and we want to make sure that the projects that get built here, you know, best, are exemplary. Yes, exemplary and best, help us best implement the goals of the town plan.
So, it talks about, as a result of a scarcity of a resource, water and sewage treatment. If we didn't have those scarcities...
Right, we might...
Would we be worried about allocating?
Maybe not, although I think there's, I think there's a desire to have that, that be a tool, that brings the community what it's looking for, just like zoning is a tool, just like, you know, other things. And actually, this is zoning. I keep saying it's not like zoning. This is proposed to be in the zoning regs, so it, it, it will drop in there like that.
So, was the allocation committee, I'm sorry if I missed something, but was the allocation group, were you advocating that there be a threshold?
Yes, the, the committee recommended one, but Dan was sort of the lone, the lone voice saying, you know, "Let's not, let's not make it so high that we're going to be exclusionary, and that we might get taken to court." I think Rob Bast, maybe you weren't the lone voice. I think Rob Bast also had that same concern. Rob felt that we might be facing, setting ourselves up for a legal challenge, if we set the bar so high that, that, you know, a, a decent project that meets all the other regs would suddenly be denied.
And one of the other points that we had talked about was, especially towards the end, when we looked at the numbers and how much higher, was it water costs, were the numbers that are in here? And one of the questions that I brought up is, well, if we did, you know, if there was more housing that was in, be able to build in Heinsberg, how would that offset some of the costs for the water and, and wastewater? And would that create us to have more water and wastewater availability? If that makes sense, what I'm saying?
No, I know, I get it.
It's been a long day, I'm sorry.
The first part does, I mean, spreading the cost of a small, across a larger user base, you know, should help in terms of those, those high rates that we have.
But I was just reading in an article in Citizen or something, about how expensive the wastewater treatment plant could be. And there's just no way that, if just the users pay for it, that it's going to get ease. You know, it's going to be very onerous for them.
Right, but I think part of Dan's point is, we might want to incentivize more housing in order to get more users on the system and spread what are going to be big costs that we're going to have to absorb regardless.
But then you get more expenses other places. Development costs towns money. I think we can all agree on that. It's going to cost, it's, it's expensive, and I'm not negative to it, it's just, it's going to cost money.
In real ways, we've already incentivized housing, it's, it's part of Village Northwest. You know, if, if, if you look at, you know, what the base density is there, and what the bonus, you know, structure is there. Right, you can build quite dense in those, I mean...
But isn't there a bunch of mixed use too?
Well, it, it's zone mixed use, right? But, but at, at the same time, the residential densities are, are fairly high in those areas. I mean, to, to me, that's a real encouragement for building housing, and especially building smaller housing, right? To, to get those densities, right? So, I, I feel like we've already fueled that. And, and I don't, I don't need yet another tool to, you know, to fu, to, to fuel, you know, building of, of housing.
So, I mean, do you feel that's going to help what Dan said with our wastewater and water allocation?
Well, I mean, the, the, I mean, the more people you hook up, right? The, the more you spread the, the fixed cost. So, so yes, I mean, that's going to help.
I wonder, Maria, if there's a way to tackle what you're suggesting, in terms of, can we give points just for housing? Not just affordable housing? By doing what Maggie was talking about, which is, well, let's, let's be more specific about the type of housing that will best, best achieve the town, the goals in the town plan. And we, we obviously talk a lot about senior and affordable housing, and that's built into this. But, yeah, but we already have something in our regs, under the density bonus section, about bonuses for smaller dwellings. Maybe we should feather that out some more in the allocation priority, saying, not only can you get a density bonus, but we're going to put you higher on the rung to get your allocation, if those units are smaller.
I have no problem with that, I'm just saying, eh, yeah, no, I don't have, that's fine with me, doesn't have...
I don't know if there are other facets of our housing policy in Heinsberg, through our town plan and such, beyond affordability, senior accommodations, and size, that we, we could try to incentivize through this.
Accessory apartments?
Yeah, which, which...
Makes it affordable?
Yeah, which is a size issue for the most part.
Yes, that is size.
Be hard to do in a 1,000 square foot house.
1,200 is what we can have now.
Accessibility is another one, maybe, that I'm not sure is, is built into this. You know, building housing that is designed for, for people with disabilities? And, help me out here, did we, did we bake that into this already, as a bonus point or something? I don't think we did. I think we did assisted living and senior housing and affordable, but not, not...
I thought there was one over, or two over here in Green Street.
There are two in Green Street.
And one in, when Alan built that, of those other condos, he had to have one.
He's got a, he's got a couple of flats. I don't know that they meet the sort of universal code for accessibility, the way that the Green Street ones do. But that might be an option to build more potential points into the housing needs thing, to, to be, you know, for smaller units and for units built to an accessibility code. I mean, we're, we're, we have an aging population. We're going to need more housing that is, that is fully accessible. Whether that means you're in a wheelchair, or you're in a walker, or you just can't do stairs, what, you know? So, that might be a possibility.
I think there is a threshold already for accessibility, residential accessibility. I mean, when you build a housing project, there's a certain number of units typically that need to be accessible. I think that's a statement.
You're going to have to show me that one, Ralph, I'm not aware of that. I know that depending on how, how many units you have on, on top, upper floors, you, you trigger the need for elevators. But if I'm doing 49 single-family homes in a development, I don't think I'm required to make any of them accessible. I don't think so. But you, you, you get back to me on that.
So, what, what, where, where are we going, where are we going with this? Where?
So, we were talking about minimum scores, and how high that score could be. And Joe's suggestion was, let's ratchet it up a little bit, make it more than 20. And, and I was trying to push back a little bit, based on what the committee talked about. And Marie's point was, well, how about we, how about we, we give people the ability to get more points by encourage, by granting points for additional kinds of housing developments?
I'm still trying to figure out how we're going to do this at Sketch Room.
Right, because it's at such an early phase of the, of the project.
Even affordable housing, they still, that's still up in the air lots of times.
Yeah, certainly, some of the things that just came out of my mouth are very much up in the air. How many of the units would be built to be accessible? You're right Dennis, there's a lot of stuff that's still up in the air at Sketch.
It's going to be hard.
And also, you know, we've got like 10 minutes, are we, I mean, it looks like we haven't...
Well, just, why don't you just finish the conversation about the minimum score question? That, I think that's where we started. What do people think of Joe's suggestion to boost it a bit, from 20 to something higher?
I don't think it's necessary.
Anybody else?
I think I would like to have it boosted, so that maybe we get some of the things that we want to have in our town. Example, connecting trails, more affordable housing, more energy efficient. Well, we didn't really make that one today.
Thistle Hill was how many?
16.
The buildings that, that have been built that are, the ones that are affordable, that affordability didn't, I don't think, came about because of the particular way and the particular materials and systems that were used to build a building. It all came about by subsidies.
Well, it's safe to build a huge apartment building, of course it's cheaper, because all your materials...
Yeah. But John's right, that, that Green Street project happened because there were huge sums of money that flowed into the project to make it possible. You know, low-income tax, tax credits, and community development block grant funding. And yes, it wasn't, it wasn't by the nature of, of how it was built.
Right, the buildings that we've gotten in, in affordable and market rate are, from what I can tell, is the same kind of building.
Does that get paid back by the rent? Some, a percentage of the rent goes back to them?
To those funders?
Yeah.
No.
Because I know if you buy a house, that they give you a bunch of money toward, if you were to sell it, you'd have to give part of your profit back to them.
So, I'm, I'm wavering...
That's like the condos at Lemon Meadows, those are like that.
So, I'm, I'm sort of wavering between 20 and 25. I mean, I'm thinking Thistle Hill should have been more than, I mean, they could have done a lot more.
Well, I look at the projects themselves, you know? And I know it's somewhat of a whiz-bang thing here, but I think upping the ante a little bit is a good, is a good thing. This is an allocation process, and heightening aspirations. You know, I, I think the order of these projects, in, in terms of import to our community, Heinsberg Center, you know, I'm divorcing myself a little bit from just, hey, how do these projects look? And, you know, just, what do they add to our community? Because there's a kind of visceral reaction to each one of these projects, that probably all of us have. And in terms of just a real... And in terms of just a real, um, healthy dose of affordable housing, um, whether it's all, you know, sort of exactly proportional, I don't know, but, you know, in my mind, this Meadow Miss project is, you know, what does it do? You know, in, in the allocation process, it provides housing, I, you know, which is needed. But at least by these allocation standards, there's not much merit to the project, you know? It got nine points, and do we put them in the queue for a sparse resource, you know? That this community's gonna pay a lot of money to upgrade, so I think upping, um, what do we have, ten? If it was ten for commercial, non-residential?
Twenty for residential.
Yeah.
Right, and Meadow Miss.
So both Thistle Hill and Meadow Miss would not have even.
They wouldn't qualify.
They wouldn't qualify for an allocation. And I don't think, you know, some of these criteria that are in this document, whether, what I put it, you know, are that difficult to achieve, you know? A few extra steps, um, I think part of it is just consciousness on the part of the developer, builder, to even know that those things exist and are worth aspiring to, so let's get on with it, you know?
But how would they have gotten twenty-five points?
Who?
Meadow Miss.
I don't think they would have.
So the project would never go off, off the ground, you mean?
Could well be.
Well, how could they have changed the project to achieve that many points? What, what?
I mean, if you throw in energy efficiency, right, and you can, you could get, you know, ten points, the, the way that the residential is written up right now, right, right there, so you go from nine to nineteen in, in that one bucket.
Energy efficiency?
Yeah.
Throw in a couple of charging stations.
Something about stormwater treatment.
Yeah, I mean.
And you could get it.
You know, and I, I, I just think, with these minimum numbers.
You get a minimum project.
If I'm a developer, right, my first shot at this before the board is to come in like, you know, one point over, right? The, the minimum, just make it, right, and, and I think, I think that what you're gonna see is that most developers try that, you're gonna have this very tight distribution of, of point numbers right around this minimum, and, and yeah, maybe over a long time, if, if your, if your allocations really last that long, maybe you're gonna, gonna move that median kind of point grant up a little bit, but man, it's gonna, it's gonna start right on top where you put it for the minimums.
And that's, and that's how zoning works.
Green Street across the road give you what you wanted? Over here, I mean, they got a huge amount of points for affordability, but you don't have any charging stations, were they energy efficient, that energy efficient? You didn't get solar, but you got rental units. But they got the most points.
Because.
Because affordability.
And because Champlain housing was available at the time, to do the project is what happened.
One reason how elderly housing didn't work up here on, uh, Thistle Hill was because they couldn't find.
That's what I said, Barbara didn't believe me, but it's true. He tried two or three times and he couldn't get it, and he wanted to do it.
Say, if Green Street had been built as just regular.
It just was the right timing.
But if it had been built as just rental housing.
Right.
Not, not through C H T, just through a, a, a developer and a, and a landowner who wanted to do rental housing. So same exact units, uh, but, but rented at a market rate.
Right.
Um, would we have not wanted that project here? Would we have said, no, cause it wouldn't have scored enough to, to get any, get enough points?
That's my point about the rental, cause it's a nice pro, I think it's really nice over there, and really.
Both ways, it's just gonna be hard on certain projects, I think.
Honestly, it's considered affordable, but really what they're paying for rents is not a lot different than people that are out in some of these other rental units that aren't considered affordable.
Oh, I don't think that's true, Marie, I, I think the rents are more.
Pretty high, some, unless I've heard correct figures.
We'd have to do comparison.
Yeah, I don't, I could be wrong, but, um, I think, I remember, cause you had it posted on the board upstairs, and I said, this is affordable? I was really very surprised.
I know, but if you, if you know what market rate rents are going for now, it's.
Well, I pay attention, I pay attention, what people are paying for rents around Heinsburg. So anyway, just saying.
Yeah.
Uh, you, that's a good point that you're making, Alex.
Right, well, that, and that's the problem I have, Ralph, when I look at these developments, I look at, Meadow Miss is an easy one to, you know, get down on cause A, it's not done yet, and you don't have people living there that you know and like, and who tell you that they love it there and all that. But I think of the Farmill Drive residential neighborhood that, that developer over there built first, it's thirty-seven homes, most of them are single-family, but there's some of those condo duplexes.
Townhouses.
Townhouse style, and, um, we didn't score it, but if we had scored just that, I don't think it would have scored very high, it was proximate. Um, and they did offer up land to the town, so they would have gotten, maybe gotten some public infrastructure points potentially, but I don't think it would have scored very high. And yet, you know, that's, I just sent you guys a silly email today about the trick-or-treat test, um, and neighborhoods, how do you, how do you know where, what, what is a well-designed neighborhood? It's where all the trick-or-treaters go, um, tomorrow.
Right.
Even if it is raining, um, and that's a trick-or-treat neighborhood, I mean, that, that's got sidewalks on both sides of the road, it's.
Lots of houses.
Yeah, it's packed in there, it's on small lots, it's got street trees, it's next to public space, it's got a lot of stuff going for it.
And another thing is very little turnover there in all these years.
So anyways, I look at a project like that, I say, well, that wouldn't even have been met the minimum score, do we not want those projects? But, but at the same time, I would like to see us get more of, you know, affordability and all the other things we do want, so it, I'm, I'm very much torn on this, you know, kind of the way Dan was during our committee meetings about whether this is gonna turn us into, you know, lend a reputation that I think we already have a little bit of, that, that Heinsburg is an elitist town, that we only want, um, development and, and, and properties that, that, uh, that serve some higher function that, you know, you, um, and, and not, you know, not projects that just provide bare, basic needs.
And yet, as, as Joe mentioned, it, you know, the, the energy efficiency is a, is a just no-brainer.
It seems that way, yeah.
For sure.
Yeah, it's more than seems that way, it is that way, and any developer who, to be honest, who doesn't go the, the high road on that is, um, you know, is just, uh, handicapping, uh, homeowners down the road, um.
Although I would tell you that what Laura said in her feedback is that the, there are these two tiers of deficiency Vermont, and she, she indicated that that, the top tier, the second tier for, is a, is a high bar, it's, it's, you know, that's not.
High performance.
Yeah, the, the highest performance for residential, so i- it's all relative, you know, to where, where, uh, where you are. But maybe there are ways that we could change the, I don't wanna go too deep into this, cause we're at the end of the conversation, but maybe there are ways that we could recalibrate the points so that what we think is achievable, but also really important, it will get you more points so that a project can achieve this minimum and still, you know, go above and beyond in a, in a reasonable way. Because I do agree that, that affordable housing, as important as it is, just like John was saying, is, is, can be very difficult to, to achieve in, in grand numbers like the Green Street project, I mean, that project was probably a, a, a once in a, once in a lifetime kind of a project to make happen.
So when we, so when we come back to this, um, that's what we'll look at as the, the overall.
Point spread?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, cause Ralph, I know you had talked about maybe rejiggering things a little bit, um, well, how about I rework it based on your feedback to date? And run the energy thing through the energy committee's mill, and at your next meeting, um, or at least the next meeting that we talk about this at, um, put it, put the revised version in front of you and hopefully you can just make some final adjustments.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, um, so let's move on to the minutes. October the twenty-third. And. Any changes, any rewriting of history? Anything you wanna deny having said in public?
Well, I mean.
Yeah, we all have those moments, um, okay, if not, uh, do I have a motion?
Motion for the minutes.
Second?
Seventh.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and, um, other business?
Um, only an email that I sent late today, so most of you probably didn't see it, the Town of Shelburne provided us notice that their planning commission is holding a public hearing on November fourteenth, um, regarding some proposed changes to their regulations. Uh, two sets of changes, one is, uh, a, a series of changes to their form-based code, uh, which is an optional code on the Route seven corridor, so it's a little bit of an odd duck in, in, um, in the other examples that we looked at. But because they sent the notice, it made me look at it, and there is some interesting stuff, so I'm gonna try to, you know, pull from that as well as the others that we looked at. So anyways, the hearing is on that and on some changes to make, um, apparently, in their village area, they have a design, a historic design district, and they have a different committee, a design review committee, that reviews projects before they go to the D R B. And they're changing their regs so that more innocuous projects still go to the design review committee, but then can short-circuit the D R B and just go to the zoning administrator and get an administrative permit, um, to make it less cumbersome, I guess, for, for easy projects. Anyways, those are the two changes they're, they're having a public hearing on, we, they're required to notify us, you have been notified.
Okay.
It's in the Dropbox for tonight's meeting if you wanna look at any of those materials.
Fantastic, and, um, just as a.
Ralph, we haven't talked about it all.
No, we haven't.
We'll have to pick them up at the next time.
So, um.
I think they're definitely worth talking about.
Our, when is our next meeting?
The twenty-first of November.
Twenty-first of November.
This is your oddball meeting because of the holidays, so it's on a Thursday, and it's on the twenty-first.
Okay, and we'll have lots to do then.
We will finish, we will attempt to finish this and hopefully be looking at the first draft of some of these design standards.
All right, good luck with that. Um, okay, unless anyone has anything else, I declare our meeting over. Thanks, everyone.